Good evening, welcome to the May 4th City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. Chairman Lamb is out of town and as Vice Chair, I will chair the meeting tonight. We do have a quorum here. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the April 6th Planning Commission meeting. Any objections, any additions or corrections from Plan Commission?
If there are none, Vice Chairman Young, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Hold on. All right, we got one question. Ms. Adelott, is there anything from staff that wanted to add to these minutes?
Nothing to worry about.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, minutes are approved. First item on our agenda is a public hearing. A zoning change request to rezone approximately 163.52 acres from PRD RS 10 and 80.85 acres from PRD to RS 12, total of 244.002 acres located west of Barfield Road including River Oaks West, PRD Rivers Edge, PRD, River Downs Annex, PRD, Wayne and Connie Phillips, Claude and Jennifer Phillips, John Phillips, Stan Vaught, Barfield Investment Partners, Pinnacle Bank, and E-Ray and Gene Lowery are our applicants. Ms. Ely.
Vice Chairman Young, I'd like to make a comment. I need to excuse myself from the discussion on this and any vote as I'm employed with Miller Lowery Beach Insurance. We're a wholly owned subsidiary of Pinnacle National Bank, so I'm going to not be part of this discussion or the vote.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I as well. I have a family member at Pinnacle National Bank and I will abstain from any discussion and any vote on this agenda item as well.
All right, thank you.
This leaves us in an unusual situation it appears in that our bylaws require that there be four members in order to take action. That leaves us, if I count correctly, three members who are still qualified tonight. We do have a quorum present to be able to conduct the meeting, however, the Plan Commission will not be able to take action because we only have three members who are qualified to vote. What will happen tonight, it looks like we will need to go ahead with our public hearing and then at a future meeting, possibly the one on May 18th to bring this back up. We will prepare the two members who are not present, who to my knowledge have no conflict of interest. We will prepare them by having the minutes available to them for them to study and also a video of the meeting so they can study it as well. And they will, I have been assured by our legal department, they will be qualified to be able to participate in a vote if they will do that. So we need to go ahead with our public hearing. We do have people here who are ready to speak and I would hate to inconvenience them by having to not allow that.
Absolutely, we have advertised that that's a public hearing. With that, we'll turn it over to Ms. Ely and she will make a presentation.
Thank you Chairman Young and Plan Commission Members. The first public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning properties that are located north of Kimbrough Road, west of Barfield Road, and just east of the Kason Lane. You can see on the illustration that I've included in your agenda packets and also the illustration that will be on the screen that the properties that we're considering for rezoning tonight are shaded into the two colors on this map, the orange and the blue color. The zoning request includes three planned developments known as River Downs Annex, River's Oaks West, and River's Edge and totals 244 acres. The properties to the north of the subject area, to the east and to the south are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The properties just to the west are within city limits and part of a developing single-family subdivisions owned PRD Planned Residential District. And just further to the west are a couple more single-family subdivisions owned RS 10 and RS 12. You can see that on the map. The property is mostly consists, the surrounding properties mostly consist of developed single-family subdivisions. There is a pipeline, a colonial pipeline which is for gas that is 50 feet wide and runs along this property. The properties are currently zoned PRD and that's Planned Residential District. And the applicants are asking for you to consider rezoning these properties from PRD to both RS 10 and RS 12. I've also included an illustration in your agenda packets that shows the three planned developments which are for consideration this evening. You can see the darkest orange color is the River Oaks West that is on the screen at the time. The pinkish color, sandwich color that's in the center is River's Edge and the dark purple is River's Downs Annex. And dark purple is what's closest to Kimbrough Road and then the River's Oaks West has direct access onto Barfield Road. The applicants are requesting that the River's Edge and River's Downs Annex in their entirety and 7.32 acres of the River's Oaks West PRD be rezoned to RS 10. Our RS 10 zone stands for Single Family Residential District and it has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The applicants are asking for the remaining portion of River Oaks West which is 80.85 acres to be rezoned from PRD to RS 12. RS 12 is similar to RS 10 in that it stands for Single Family Residential District but the minimum lot sizes for the RS 12 zone are 12,000 square feet. Both the RS 10 and RS 12 zoning districts have the same setback requirements. They require that the principal structure or the house be set back at least 35 feet from the front property line, 10 feet from the side lot lines, and 25 feet from the rear lot lines. The zoning that the applicants are requesting will provide a density that is the same as is currently permitted under the PRD zone, so this isn't a rezoning that will result in an increase in density or an increase in the number of single-family dwelling units that's currently permitted, it's simply saying it a different way. There has been a final plat that's been recorded for River Oaks West Section 1. You can see that's why, that's where Audubon Lane is and you can see the lots on the illustrations that you have. There's some infrastructure that has been already installed on these properties such as beginning streets and sewers and those sorts of things. Any subdivision of the land would have to present a plat to you and of course that would be your responsibility to review and approve. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting on April 26th at the Scales Elementary School Zone, or School District, sorry. And I was there as well as the planning staff and members of the applicants and several members of the surrounding neighborhoods who were interested. It's a well-attended meeting and I know that it's important to you that we make sure we try to get the word out and so I think that the applicants, they used my same mailing list for legal notices to send to those people, so it was well-attended. The Plan Commission should conduct a public hearing before considering any recommendation. You can't make a recommendation tonight because you don't have the right number of people. But before you do conduct a public hearing, we'd like to give Mr. Matt Murfree an opportunity to come up, he's representing the applicants since there are so many, to go ahead and come up and speak and I guess after that you'll have several other people? Okay. Do you want this closed?
Members of the Plan Commission, I'm Matt Murfree, a partner of the law firm of Murfree &amp; Murfree. My law partner, Brick Murfree, and Steve Steele of Huddleston Steel Engineering are here with me to present the applicant's Pinnacle Bank, Ray and Gene Lowery, Stan Vaught and John Phillips, Claude and Jennifer Phillips, Wayne and Connie Phillips, and Barfield Investment Partners request. We are here tonight on the application for rezoning of River Downs Annex, River's Edge Subdivision, and River Oaks West Subdivision. The land is currently zoned PRD. It was originally owned by entities controlled by Claire Van De Scheff. It was his plan to develop the land under our common vision. Because of significant changes in the economy and market conditions, much of the land was taken over by Pinnacle Bank, Volunteer Bank, Green Bank, and others. It currently belongs to the owners I previously listed. The development of all of this property under one vision by one owner was much simpler situation than the current development proposed by multiple owners. When we originally met with Mr. Joseph Adelott, your planning director, he said these projects posed quite a conundrum. When I looked up the word in the dictionary, I found that he basically meant it's quite a mess. Mr. Adelott encouraged us to try and develop a unified approach between the multiple property owners. This we have done and this is the reason we are here tonight. Let me say that none of these banks wanted to take this land back and the current owners are here tonight to do what is best for our city, the surrounding neighbors, and so this property can be converted from a wasteland into a nice development. Please be aware that under the present zoning, some 500 lots can be developed without a zoning change. If this happens, the development would have to be in line with the regulations in the PRD package. Steve Steele, our engineer, and Brick Murfree, my partner, have attempted to develop proposed restrictive covenants which will be placed on the property involved prior to the final approval of the rezoning application. These are in line with the PRD requirements. I might say that the major change we are making in the rezoning is that the clubhouse and amenity packages are being deleted. We felt this was necessary as it was not clear with the multiple property owners who would be responsible for building or maintaining these amenities. The thought was that before houses are built, that amenities should be deleted to avoid confusion about them with potential owners or purchasers. Obviously, these amenities that build would only be for homeowners in the area being rezoned and of course there are nine, and their deletion will have no impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. Steve Steele and Brick Murfree will explain after I conclude the proposed restrictive covenants which are very similar to what is currently in place. I might tell you there is no increase in the density of the development except there could be two additional lots where the amenities are located. Many of the covenants are almost identical to the current ones in place. We have had recently a neighborhood meeting and the proposed restrictions have been changed since then to address some of the concerns expressed. There were concerns expressed that Mr. Adelott said we didn't have the authority to do regarding public streets and things like that. Brick Murfree and Steve Steele will now discuss the covenants in more detail. Thank you.
I'm Brick Murfree at the law firm of Murfree &amp; Murfree. I'm going to walk y'all through the restrictive covenants and Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel is going to discuss road alignments, engineering details, lot configurations, and the like. And we'll be here to answer any questions that y'all may have at the end of the presentation. So this is the rezoning, as Matt said, of River Downs Annex, River's Edge, and River Oaks West. The existing zoning for these developments is PRD and I've got an exhibit to my presentation, which is Exhibit 1, which outlines the current zoning that Steve will walk y'all through in just a minute. The River Downs Annex, River Edge, and River Oaks West that we are requesting rezoning for will be rezoned from PRD to the bulk zoning classifications of RS 10 and RS 12. Steve is going to walk y'all through Exhibit 2 at the end of my portion of the presentation which delineates both the current lot sizes as well as the zoning classifications that What we are doing is we are, Steve and I went through the PRD packages that are currently approved that have certain restrictions and requirements. And what we've done is tried to re-implement those provisions via restricted covenants. So we'll have private covenants that go down before the final reading that will re-implement essentially the same restrictions and covenants that were in the PRD package. And I'm going to walk y'all through those. The first one addresses minimum house sizes. River Downs Annex, River Oaks West, and River's Edge would have 2,000 square feet minimum house sizes under roof including garage. And we'll commit to putting this down as a restrictive covenant. The neighbors expressed some, we had some discussion at the neighborhood meeting about house sizes. The existing, well, as a compromise per these discussions, we are proposing that 1,800 square feet of heated living space be required for all the lots that adjoin the existing River Downs subdivision. And this square footage requirement would be identical to the existing River Downs subdivision which is where the majority of the folks at the neighborhood meeting are living. So we would basically copy their square footage requirements on the lots that had joined their subdivision. Building materials. Building materials for all three subdivisions would be 75% brick, stone, or cementitious material. No vinyl with the exception of dormers, soffits, and eaves. And this will be placed as a restrictive covenant. This restrictive covenant is a compromise. We originally had 70% brick, stone, and cementitious material. We've upped that percentage by 5% and that's identical to the requirements in the existing River Downs subdivision. And so what we'll do is just copy the restrictions in the neighboring subdivisions as to brick requirements, stone requirements, and the like. And as I said, this is, this will be exactly like the River Downs subdivision currently in existence. Clubhouses and pools. Matt mentioned there are two amenity centers which is, you know, word for clubhouses basically, and pools in the two developments of River's Edge and River Oaks West. And Steve will identify those here in a minute, Steve Steele, but our proposal is to remove those in their entirety. The existing road infrastructure is going to dictate a lot when it comes to this development. The existing roadways and infrastructure already in place for River's Edge Section 1, River's Edge Section 2, and River Oaks West as well as River Downs Annex Section 1 already have roads in place. They're not topped, but they're there. So they don't have the final coat on, but they're cut, they're laid, they're ready to go basically. The investment on these existing roads and other infrastructure, it will basically dictate the road alignment. Cost will dictate where these roads are going to be and so we don't anticipate the layout of these streets changing. It's just cost prohibited to do so. In furtherance of discussion about road alignments, originally when these PRDs were passed, there was a concern about having basically a speedway, a long straight shot between Barfield Road and Kason Lane, something that, you know, people, teenagers could get up a lot of speed and basically fly through River Downs. We will commit vis-à-vis restrictive covenants to not have a direct shot. What we anticipate doing is having kind of a circuitous, you know, a curvy road that goes through there that doesn't lend itself to people using it as a cut through. And Steve Steele will walk y'all through that in just a second, but we'll commit to not having a straight shot. If the applicants are successful with the rezoning, Southeast Building, Southeastern Building Corporation, which through Barfield Investors or Investments is the owner of Section 1, they're likely going to come back and seek a variance on a few lots, but we're not sure exactly what lots those are going to be at this point. An additional restrictive covenant is a 10-foot wide tree and landscape conservation easement between the existing River Downs subdivision and River Downs Annex Section 1 and River Downs Annex Section 2. Downs Annex, Section 2. This was a covenant and an agreement. It was in the original PRD package that was a compromise with the neighbors, this area that would allow the tree line to stay in place. We're re-implementing that. We're going to put that down as restriction. We're putting it back in that way. So, that existing requirement, we're putting back in to help mitigate the development and keep that tree line in place. For all the developments, we'll sod the front yards, and that'll be -- that requirement will be put down as a restrictive covenant. That just makes things look nice, having a nice sodded front yard. Upon the completion of any home, a 1-inch and 1/2 -- 1 and 1/2-inch native tree will be required to be planted in all front yards. We'll put that down as a restrictive covenant as well. There'll be side and rear-entry garages for all homes, and this will go down as a restrictive covenant as well. And all utilities will be underground for all three developments. The existing construction plans that were previously approved by the city of Murfreesboro for River's Edge, Section 1, River's Edge, Section 2, River Downs Annex, Section 1, and River Oaks West, Section 1, will be used in conjunction with the completion of these sections, and we'll put sidewalks in per city requirements in the entire -- in the entire three developments. There'll be a homeowners' association created for each of the subdivisions, and there'll be a requirement that these HOAs enter into a third-party management contract with a Timmins or a Gertner, somebody along those lines, to make sure that the developments are well-maintained and well-managed. And I'll yield the floor to Steve Steele, who will walk you all through the engineering and lot configuration, and we'll be here to answer any questions at the completion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brick and Matt. I'd like to direct our attention to the exhibit that's on the screen. When we -- and let me back up just a little. I was pleased to be the original engineer of record on this project and worked with Mr. Claire Van Der Skaff. As Matt mentioned, he had a vision, and all this property was going to work together. I'm likewise happy to be here tonight to try to get this development back on track. And when we went and sat down with the planning staff, Mr. Adalot asked us to take a look at the lots and see what we've got, and the way we decided to do that was to color-code them. And so, that is what's on the screen that we're looking at. The lots that are orange in color have a minimum size of 10,000 square feet, and the size ranges up to just under 12,000 square feet. The ones colored in yellow have a minimum size of 12,000 square feet, and the size might range up to just under 15,000 square feet. Those in green have a minimum size of 15,000 square feet, and some are quite larger than that, due mainly to geometry and where the lot is at the end of a cul-de-sac or along the major gas transmission line that's out there. So, bottom line, the orange would qualify as RS-10 lots, the yellow would qualify as RS-12, and the green as RS-15 by size, just with size considerations. So, when we put the color to that, I think you see that there's a large area of orange in the middle of the project, which falls into what was approved as the River's Edge Plan Development. And from the River's Edge Plan Development, we designed and this body approved subdivision plats for River's Edge 1, 2, 3, and 4, and River Downs Annex Sections 1 and 2. So, we've got a lot of orange, and I believe in the pattern book, it talked about a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. So, that is our rationale for asking that that property become, as you'll see in a minute, RS-10, because that's what best suits what was originally planned and approved, and again, as you'll see in a minute, what was constructed to date. To the right, to the north, in the River Oaks West development, you see predominantly yellow, and that tells us that most of the lots were sized to be 12,000 square feet or larger. And so, that's the reason, the rationale for asking for RS-12 in what has been known to date as River Oaks West. Again, looking at the screen, I brought up the second of Brick's two exhibits, and this shows two things. It shows what is requested to be zoned RS-12, which is in yellow, and that is the River Oaks West development. And what is in orange is what is requested to be zoned RS-10, which was the original River's Edge Plan Development, which evolved into the River's Edge and River Downs Annex subdivisions. I did fail to mention there was one more Plan Development, and that was the River Downs Annex, Section 3. Mr. Van Der Skaff was able to acquire that property after most of all the planning had been done, and it's actually in that orange area also. It's to the south end of the property, down to Kimbrough Road, which is to the left as you look to the screen. What we've also shown on this exhibit are the layout of roads and lots, their configuration for the areas where infrastructure is in the ground. Brick mentioned that there is a lot of infrastructure in the ground in sections of this, River's Edge, Section 1, which is at the top, River's Edge, Section 2, which is basically in the middle, River Oaks West, which is to the right, lower right, and then the River Downs Annex, Section 1, which is kind of in the middle. Because we have sewers, water lines, drainage, detention ponds, curb and gutter, streets with base stone, we don't see anybody changing this layout. I guess it's possible, if you had more money than good sense, you might want to redo it, but realistically, that's not going to happen. So, we've shown the lots and the roads on here that are basically in the ground today. The remainder of the property, which in yellow would be the property that Mr. Lowery and his wife still own, went through the Plan Development process but was never platted or brought to you as a subdivision plat. And so, nothing is in the ground there. The remainder of the orange area is in the same boat, basically. There's not any infrastructure in the ground there. The way this property ties in and interconnects with the adjoining properties, there are roads that stub in. I find it very difficult to believe that the layout would change much at all from what we showed before, and I'm going to go back to it if I can. There it is. That shows you the general layout. We really don't think that layout's going to change because it's pretty efficient, it's fully designed, we feel like it'll work that way, don't think somebody would go back to square one, but we have no way of guaranteeing that because today, it's basically raw land. I think that's all we have. We'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have at the appropriate time.
Any questions from the Planning Commission at this time?
Mr. Steele, are there sidewalks projected on both sides of the development?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
With that, if you're not familiar with our public hearings, we'll invite you to the podium to speak for or against this, but ask you to speak three minutes or less if you're -- unless you are a spokesman for a group. Please address all the comments to this panel, and at the end of the public hearing, we will try to answer all questions that were brought up during the public hearing. With that, I will open up the public hearing and invite anyone to speak.
Good evening. I'm Greg Lombal. I live at 215 Oscar Court. I'm also the president of the River Downs Homeowners Association, and want to address a few items that we believe should be considered. First of all, we believe that the lots adjoining River Downs, primarily, you'll see that they are Janus and Dunrow Court. Most of those lots are shown as a 10,000-square-foot proposal. That is in that area that was discussed as raw land, and we'd like to see those to be a minimum of 12,000 square foot. If you look at those plats, I think you'll see that most of our lots are probably two to three times the size of the 12,000 square foot. So, we believe that that's a fair compromise. Further, we'd like to request that instead of -- we appreciate the effort that they have made to go 1,800 square feet of living space adjacent to River Downs, but we believe to protect our property values, it would be good for the 1,800 square foot to be applied to the entire subdivisions that are proposed. In addition, the minimum of 75% brick or stone or cementitious material, we'd like to see that changed where the cementitious material is not included as a primary exterior siding for the houses. The reason is, is that when you look at that from a distance, it primarily looks like vinyl siding, and we believe that that would improve the value of that property and our property as well. We'd also like to request that there be no construction traffic through River Downs. And if possible, we'd also like to see that the name for the section that's River Downs Annex be changed to something else. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Mr. Adalot, you get all that?
I'm finishing up the last one.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Adalot.
My name is Susan Erickson. I live at 2023 Ivy Glen Drive. Some of us have been here more than others. This is my third appearance in Chambers. We moved in our house December 2006, and in August 2007, we received official notice that there was a public hearing to be planned. I'll talk fast, I have three minutes. And this was the first notification. Notice this area, how small it is. And we came here, and the motion was tabled, okay? Notice how small. August 2007. In January 2008, we picked up these flyers from the property adjacent to us. We're going to have six RS-10s right next to our property, not to mention the view shed. These flyers, they're all at minimum 2,500-square-foot homes. And at the time, they were $269,000 to $279,000. So, we were aware of that. We actually bought our house from a Realtor, Mark Fie, who worked for Krylik. How do you say it? Krylik. Okay, so then, in February 2008, we received another notice to report to Chambers. Notice the growth. This time, I wish I could hold them all up. Little bitty, bigger, all the way out to Kimbrough. PRD went to RS-10s, RS-12s. So, I received a notice from Murfree &amp; Murfree to an invitation to a neighborhood meeting, which I attended last Tuesday, which I walked out of. When I was presented with four owners, through compromise, through development, that they were going to make things, you know, similar, and this, what you saw, this. We've been here -- this is my third visit. More have been here. Barfield has no, nothing on the radar for expansion. We're going to have these entrances out of River Downs. We are going to have an entrance on Kimbrough. Those folks are going to come down, they're going to get on Barfield, and they're going to go out. I go to work every morning, 38 years with federal government, celebrated yesterday. I take my life in my hands. There is a dangerous curve on this end, a dangerous curve on that end. And then, I get to the end of Barfield, and I'm on New Salem. And I wait sometimes two, three lights. I don't mind progress. I don't mind progress. Just if the two developments can coincide, that would be great. But right now, we are in no situation to pass anything tonight based on infrastructure. Last point, because I'm probably drawing on my three minutes, is that Mr. Adalot, personally, though this is my third visit, I'd rather be inconvenienced than for you to hand minutes to missing council members to form a quorum. I don't think that's a good representation. You're welcome to speak when I'm done. And in last -- after last meeting, first meeting, it was tabled. Second meeting, we had two champions. We had Mr. Halliburton and Ms. Jones, and this time, they both recused themselves. And that bothers me. That bothers me. We need champions, and as one of my neighbors so eloquently put it in 2008, "Let's put a lid on it." Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone, sir, want to speak?
I'm Fred Rieker, 111 Whittle Court. I'm a previous president of the River Downs Homeowners Association. I'm no longer associated with the Homeowners Association. I've done my duty. This has got to be my fifth or sixth time coming before this body to try to defend the property values in our neighborhood. The average house size in our neighborhood is about 2,300, 2,400 square feet. A good 20% of the houses have four garages. The average lot size is 3/4 of an acre. All the houses are brick or stone. So, we have a nice neighborhood, and the houses are spread out, and it's a very desirable place to live. And proposal after proposal has come for this new development to make the houses smaller, the lots way smaller, and I think that's going to affect the value of our neighborhood. The thing that most object to is the section in the proposed covenants that says that the minimum house size will be 2,000 square feet, and then they throw in that devious little clause, including the garage. Now, nowhere in the history of mankind have I seen garage space included in the size of a house. I think it's devious, and I really think it's misleading. If you put in a 2,000-square-foot house, including the garage, you're talking about a 1,500 or 1,600-square-foot house. That's nowhere near the size of the houses in our neighborhood. So, I really -- and I'd like to add one last thing. When this proposal for River's Edge was originally proposed, it was proposed to have 2,000-square-foot houses. Nothing was said about including the garage. The Planning Commission came along later and put in a plus or minus 10% tolerance, which wasn't discussed at the meeting at all. So, when we left the meeting, as members of the River Downs Homeowners Association, we were expecting to get 2,000-square-foot houses, which would be somewhat less than what are in our neighborhood, but at least they'd be close. And so, I would urge the Planning Commission to take a real hard look at that little clause, including the garage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Carmen Davidson, and I live at -- where do I live, Charlie? 313 Dunrow Court. I had some questions last week at the meeting, and I'd like a little sidebar here. I really appreciate them having the meeting, and it was very informational. You know, it took up our time, but it was very informational, and I'm sure it took up the people who were kind enough to come. up the people who were kind enough to come out and tell us what they were thinking, you know, they would like to do. And, you know, I want to thank you for that. On the other side of that, I had some questions for Mr. Adalot, and he promised me an answer by tonight about moving a road so we can make this orange row here yellow. And Mr. Steele told me he would check on it for me. And so that's my question about that. I want to know why we can't slide the road over a little bit and give us at least some yellow bordering air property right through there. Right now, I have four and a half lots going to border my backyard. It would be nicer to have a larger lot bordering my backyard when you take into consideration, and this is a consideration, and I appreciate it, the 10-foot buffer between air property and any other property. But it's still going to be really close. And that's, that's the main question I have. Most everything else has been answered tonight. I know everybody in this county is hurting. I know Rutherford County is, its main income was construction and development and all that. And I know everybody's in it to get what they can and make a living. And I understand that. But I would appreciate a compromise on maybe moving the road over or getting us a little yellow. I tend to wiggle out a little bit when I see so much orange, so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hello. David Sexton, 206 River Downs Boulevard. I would like to know from Mr. Adalot if there's ever been a traffic study done on Barfield Road. As has been mentioned, there's quite a few dangerous points on that road. And if there's not been a traffic study done, I would like to know if one could be done to see what the impact of this new subdivision would be. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'll speak again.
No, ma'am. Only once. Anyone else? Do it once. With hearing none or seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adalot, you have a good list of questions. Let's hear what we can come up with.
Yes, sir. And I may go beyond just some of the questions in order to offer explanations. First of all, with regards to Mr. Limbaugh with the River Downs Homeowners Association, it seemed to me all of his comments had to do with changes to the restrictive covenants that the applicants are offering to place upon the property. I want to clarify something about those restrictions. These restrictions will not be something that the city has any authority over. These will not be anything that the city will enforce. These will not be anything that the city will be directly involved in. This will not be anything that the city will have any direct authority to demand that they be changed one way or the other. However, I think that the applicants are listening closely to what's being said. They do want to have some peace in the neighborhood. They don't want to have an antagonistic situation. They are preparing restrictions for a couple of reasons. One of the reasons is to protect each other from each other. When this property was under one visionary's ownership and leadership, he had the ability to exercise control over the whole thing. And it was many moving parts, but he had control over those parts. As the ownership has become fragmented, the individual owners no longer have that control. And while I sense that there is a lot of trust among the applicants of what the others would do, I think they all feel a little bit more comfort in knowing that each one will be bound to a restriction that's similar to what the original planned development was. So I wanted you to know that I am not going to recommend any changes to them directly to you because you have no authority over those proposed restrictions. They are a gesture of good faith by the applicants. And I will tell you, from what I've seen, they are basically the equivalent of what the PRD zoning was for each of these, in terms of the restrictions. The one difference being this livability space. Now, I have searched the record, I have gone through minutes, and I don't find any discussion that says that the 2,000 square foot was going to include the garage. I don't find it clear that it was going to exclude the garage. I believe that if there was a judge reviewing it, that he would probably side on the side of property rights and say, "It does not include the garage." I don't know. I'm not that judge. I'm not a lawyer. But I have read many cases, and I am familiar with that body of law. And that's what I suspect would be the end result. I sense that if the applicants are willing to adopt the very same restriction on that point for the property immediately adjacent to it, where the owners are asking for protection, that that's a very good gesture. I will also remind the planning commission and members of the public and those who are listening that generally, those are, well, almost universally, those are minimum restrictions. And its development will start with possibly minimums, but they usually build up higher. Most of the, I think, River Downs subdivision, which is the adjacent subdivision, actually has an 1,800 square foot minimum, including livable space. But the houses are larger, and that's because people built larger houses than the minimums. They almost always do. And that will happen here, too. Something else on the point of lot size, and I know this may be skipping just a little bit, but lot size. The orange does not mean that the lots will actually be 10,000 square foot. That will be a minimum size. The zoning, if it's placed upon it, will mean that the minimum size that can be created will be 10,000 square foot. But most, all of those lots will be larger. There'll be 11,000, 12,000, and there will be lots that are 15,000. Because what you see on this map, although the zoning may be, now, one thing I'm not going to suggest that the planning commission do is to create a patchwork of little bitty RS-15 zones and RS-12 zones and RS-10 zones. That doesn't make sense to anybody. A zone should be a large area that covers a geographic area with similarities. If you tried to create an RS-15 here for these lots and behind Ms. Davidson's house, create an area that's yellow for RS-12, it becomes a patchwork. I think, I think, I understand her concern. I really genuinely do. And I appreciate it. But I don't think she has to see that the lots will be exactly 10,000 square foot. The streets will remain much the same place, and that's what's going to dictate a lot of lot size. Now, I want to go on to Ms. Erickson's questions. Actually, I want to go back to one more thing on the matter of Mr. Limbaugh. Subdivision name. Subdivision name. In five years, it won't matter. They can name that thing anything they want to, as long as they follow a couple of rules. One thing, the subdivision does not need to duplicate any other subdivision already in existence anywhere in Rutherford County. We don't want to have the same name exactly. If it's going to duplicate a name, it needs to be adjacent to it so it feels like it's the same subdivision. It does not need to be obscene. We don't want obscene subdivision names. That's wrong. We don't want to create them. So if they follow those rules, and if we see a problem with 911, we'll exclude it for other reasons. If it's, if it sounds like something or is spelled like something. Otherwise, they're free to name it pretty much what they want. I would not be surprised by what they want to change it on their own, anyway. I would expect that these names have, to some degree, become stigmatized because of the notoriety that they've experienced through the foreclosure process and the downturn in the economy. I have developers calling me frequently right now who are wanting to change names of subdivisions, wanting to know how to do it. And subdivisions that are beginning to come back to life. So it's a real non-issue, and if it's up to the developers, if they want to do it, I'm fine with it. About the construction traffic through River Downs, I did want to talk about that. The construction traffic, that is something that we might be able to help them with during the construction of the subdivision, as we review the construction plans. Now, some of that work is already done. But once that street is opened up to as a public street, when they're building individual houses, it's almost impossible for us to do anything to stop that traffic. It just, it just, it's, first of all, they have a right to use it for local deliveries. And second of all, it's just become such a difficulty trying to catch every contractor coming through there or every materials delivery. You can't do it. But while that subdivision, while the streets, the curbs and gutters, the asphalt, that sort of thing, we can, we can do a little bit better job of that, and we can place some reasonable conditions on those. Now, about Ms. Erickson, I am very pleased that she's had these opportunities to participate in the deliberations in her neighborhood. While I understand that she may feel that it's been an imposition that this happened, but the city went through zoning processes and invited. We have pretty much approved these three developments, the River Downs Annex, the River Oaks West, and the River's Edge. And we also considered some possible amendments to the River Oaks West development. Those were denied. That was going to increase the density in the, and that would be, if you look at this map right here, the area that's colored orange up here that includes the Lowery property. In that area, Mr. Vanschaff came back with a couple of plans for alley-loaded lots, for small lots, 4,000 square foot, similar to what he had over on Casey Lane. And he made two requests, and both of those were denied by the planning commission. He got the message. He didn't come back for a third one. Maybe he didn't get the message because he's out of it now, and he's not involved, so we don't know what else he might have had on his mind. But in any event, the planning commission did protect the neighborhood by denying those lots in that respect. About Barfield Road. Barfield Road is not currently on the city's capital plan for improvement. Barfield Road has not been a street that is in the city, and it's not one that the county has brought to us as one that the county wants us to participate with. I believe that the county has created the traffic that exists on that street pretty much today. That is, the development along that were, that's already creating houses, that puts traffic on Barfield Road, was created by the city, by the county. All the same, the city does operate the traffic signal at Barfield and Salem Highway. The city did construct that traffic signal, and the city did construct the road improvements at Barfield and Salem Highway. The city has been very much involved in getting the estate to move forward with the Salem Highway road project. And as I understand it, it's currently in right-of-way acquisition. The state's currently acquiring right-of-way. I'm not certain of the bid date, but I believe it's moving forward. The city is in the process of constructing Veterans Parkway. And it is now open all the way from State Route 840, actually Burn knob Road, south all the way to Kimbrough Road, where it goes back to a two-lane street. The city is in the process of bidding that segment from, basically from Kimbrough Road, or which is now St. Andrews. We call it Kimbrough because that's what it used to be called. But from St. Andrews eastward all the way to the Barfield Elementary School, where it's already a five-lane road. So that is designed, that is in the process of being, moving forward to being bid, and we will be seeing construction over the course of the next two years. Because it will be a big project, and it will take a while to be done. So while the city has not budgeted money to rebuild Barfield Road, the city has undertaken very significant roadway improvements in the area that will help to, help with the traffic in that area. Barfield Road has two ends, and one of those ends connects with the Veterans Parkway that the city is building. And that's, I think, a very significant and helpful improvement. Also, these subdivisions are designed to tie back into Casey Lane so that they don't exclusively dump traffic on the Barfield Road. The issue of efficient infrastructure, I want to remind the public and the planning commission, this is not about newly approved subdivisions. This issue tonight is about amending subdivisions that are already approved and are already ready. Today, they can move forward with building construction on some of the lots because they're ready for permits. Tomorrow, they can have additional lots ready for building permits. Over the course of the next several months, they can have even additional lots ready for permits because the streets and water lines are pretty much in place already. What they're asking for is to amend the zoning on how we regulate the program. As a planned development, there is a program book that specifies the amenities, the lot size, the house size, the building materials, the basic layout of the plan. What is being proposed is we go back to traditional zoning to regulate additions to the building permits from here on and get rid of the amenities. They're proposing that the restrictive covenants will regulate the building materials and the house size. The, pretty much, the streets are already designed or are already in place. So the need for the planned development zoning is not what it was when Mr. Vanschaff was coming through, creating a new neighborhood in that area. So what I'm coming back to is, the infrastructure on Barfield Road is a little bit of a non-issue. If you, if you were to try to tell the applicants that, you know, "We want to have a second thought here. We think that maybe we ought to deny this request so she won't do anything," it doesn't work. If you tell them, "We deny this request," they say, "Okay. We just go back to the planned development that we already have. We're ready for permits." So it's, by denying this, you're not going to stop the development from taking place. The entitlement has already been established. And I want, I want the public to understand that. It's not going to stop the development from happening. The development has already been approved. It's already entitled. With regards to a traffic study on Barfield Road, we have done traffic analysis. We have evaluated the roadway deficiencies. And yes, there are significant roadway deficiencies in both vertical and horizontal alignments. And what that means is, horizontal alignments means your curves. Your vertical means your hills. And there are problems with both. Also, the roadway does not have shoulders. The roadway is immediately adjacent to the river. In some places, it is literally in the floodway of West Forkstones River. In some places, the roadway drops off very quickly and steeply into the river, causing a dangerous or a, I don't think that's the right word to say, but a very difficult embankment. And those are all in the county, right now. The streets that intersect that road do not have turn lanes, although there were some turn lane improvements made for Audubon Drive into the Rivers Oaks West subdivision. And that was required by the city. And some of that work is already done that improves the intersection. But those are all existing problems. And someday, that road will need to be addressed. Now, with regards to Ms. Davidson's question about, can we give her more yellow in the back of her lot by shifting the street? Yes, I believe it can be done. I'm not sure that it should be done, but I believe that it can be done, particularly across the street behind her. The ones backing up to her, I don't know if they can help a lot without reducing the, losing the lot. Across the street, they can. But what I want, what I want to point out to the planning commission is a very important thing, a consideration for planning. From traffic management standpoint, from service delivery standpoint, from the ability to make a neighborhood livable, streets need to be interconnected, and so do subdivisions. A moment ago, I said it'd be a five-year issue, nobody would worry about it on the street name. Same way with street connections. Members of this planning commission have gone through those Members of this Plan Commission have gone through those situations where in the past, we've had people come to us and beg not to see a street connection made. Only after about three or four years, they begin to use it and to think of having that street connection closed would upset them even more than having it originally, because it gives them another way in and another way out. These type of street connections become extremely important when we have a natural emergency, as we have with tornadoes. We, these tornadoes, they block streets, and we need other ways in and out. And it's not just the ambulance drivers and the fire trucks and the policemen, it's the people who are trying to get home to their property. When one way is blocked, it is very good to have another way to be able to get home. And many of us have experienced that a year ago, two years ago, in the spring. So these types of interconnections are important, and I understand that Ms. Davidson wanting to have a little bit incrementally larger lot right behind her, but the benefit to the city, to the neighborhood, to the service providers, is very important too. And once that street is built, it is literally cast in concrete. The houses get built, the ability to go back in and put that street in is almost gone. It is so costly to go back and build them. So I really want to be careful and say, Ms. Davidson, that maybe that is not such a good idea, but I'm willing to consider it when we review the construction plans when they come back. And as far as a traffic study and impact to be done on the subdivision, at this point, I don't think one's warranted. It's, I've already covered that. We've, the density has already been entitled. It's not a matter of a new subdivision. Were there any other issues you would like me to address?
Ms. Daylight, I have a question. There is a 10-foot landscaping easement put into this, some of this area, is that...
That was a, behind Ms. Davidson's house as well.
Where is she? What street is she on?
It's hard to see. Let me see if, okay, if you will look at this illustration right here.
Okay.
That was prepared by the city. You can see the city's logo in the bottom, and it's one that says, well, it's got all the, it's got the Legend of Subdivisions. She would be at the end of Dunrow Court.
Okay, I see that.
And along this heavy green line, that's the city limits line, there is a existing tree row. And what she wants to see happen is that that tree row be protected, so that the, any excavation for the drainage ditch, or for any house, respect those trees so that they're not unreasonably damaged. I think she would understand and accept that there may need to be some manicuring, maybe the undergrowth removed, for whoever owns that lot, but she'd like to see the existing trees to the extent that they are viable and can contribute towards screening, remane.
Now, did the applicant propose that?
Yes, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Brick Murphy, talking about his restrictions, indicated that they would place a restriction on those lots to keep a conservation easement in place in that area.
In like kind to like kind, RS-15 to RS-12, 10 to 12, we normally don't require that, do we?
No, sir, we do not. We do not require buffering between single-family zones.
So that's a...
An accommodation.
Okay.
And it's a little bit of a holdover from the previous planned development. Mr. Vaneska saw the value of the tree line when he was doing his planned development, and he was willing to make an effort to preserve it.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Clark?
I have a question, Ms. Daylight, regarding the traffic study for Barfield. That's a county road, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is, except for the place where the city has annexed at the intersection with Audubon Drive, just a little bit of that is City Street, and just a little bit up at the intersection adjacent to the World Outreach Church.
New Salem.
New Salem.
Who can request the county to do a study?
I think anybody can request that there are road board, or that the county's plan department undertake these type of studies. Certainly, there is a county commissioner in that area who prides himself in being vigilant for his district, and certainly, I think he would be interested in that issue. And I'm not sure whose district it is.
I know it's a councilman. I get lots of calls, and I respond to every call, and I solve their problems, but I certainly respond to their calls, and I will leave it at that. Any other questions? Mr. Clark? Okay, Ms. Daylight, if I understand correctly, we're going to defer this tonight.
Because we only have three qualified votes, we are, our voters, we cannot transact business on this item, so we will, by necessity, must defer action on it.
Do we need a motion to defer action? We don't have a quorum, so we can't have a motion.
By default, we will. It will be brought up on the next Plan Commission agenda, and just for the lady, Ms. Erickson, who spoke on that issue, I'm, the other members, two members who are absent, they would like to have been here, but both of them had obligations that called them out of town. What we will do is, we will prepare them by having the minutes, which will be, at first, a draft version of them, because until the Plan Commission approves those minutes, that's all they will be. But we will also have them review the video of the meeting, so that they can see everything that was discussed, and hear the testimony that was provided.
I'd like to say this to the people that spoke tonight. Your ideas have been listened to, and still, there's some things that can be adjusted in this, so I would suggest that if you have other questions or comments, you may want to talk to the, Mr. Daylight and his staff will be glad to help you, and/or Mr. Steele, Mr. Murphy may be able to help you with some of these things also. So with that, I guess we'll move on to the next item.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's see.
No, sir, you call me tomorrow.
It'll take about a minute here, let them clear out. How'd that go? Our next item is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 1.6 acres from RS-8 to CH, located east of Salem Highway, State Route 99, and north of West Main Street, Wendell T. Jones applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again, Chairman Young. The second public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning approximately 1.6 acres, located on the northeastern corner of West Main Street and Highway 99, or we call it New Salem Highway as well. The property is currently zoned RS-8, which is single-family residential district. The property that's adjacent to this parcel to the north is zoned CH, Highway Commercial District, and the adjacent property along the eastern property line is zoned RM16, multifamily residential district, and is the location of an apartment complex. I've also included an illustration submitted by SEC that shows an ortho photo of the property there. You can see the Thorntons Gas Station, which is the CH zone property on the corner of Old Ford Parkway and New Salem Highway, and apartment complex to the immediate east. To the south of the subject property, on the southern side of West Main Street, are some developed single-family houses, and they're zoned RS-8, which again, is single-family residential district, and just across Highway 99, it's property zoned CH, which is Highway Commercial District. This property was formerly for single-family residential lots, each with their own single-family residential structure. Located upon them, the property owner, Mr. W.T. Jones, removed those houses, and since removing those houses, has submitted a plat to combine the four lots into one lot, to show his good faith effort, that he does not intend to request a commercial highway zoning on small residential lots, and then try to get each of the small lots, which really don't meet our minimum standards, to have their own commercial development, but to have a development that would be larger size, and would, he'd be able to plan for better. The applicant has not indicated any immediate plans for the future development of this property, that he just has a request that you consider rezoning it from RS-8 to CH, which is Highway Commercial District. The Highway Commercial District, again, is adjacent on the northern side and across Highway 99, and he believes that that would be a more appropriate zone for this property. Property is removed from the RS-8 zone, which is across West Main Street, physically removed. It's not adjacent to any existing single-family residences, or adjacent to any residential zones, so he believes that the CH zoning would be most appropriate. Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing before considering rezoning the property to CH. I'm not aware of any conflict, so I think that you'll have the ability to vote on this and forward your recommendation to City Council after the public hearing. Mr. Matt Taylor is representative of the applicant. He's available to speak if you would like for him to. Otherwise, he hasn't prepared a presentation, so if you'd like to go ahead and hold the public hearing, it would be appropriate at this time.
Any questions from Ms. Ely before the public hearing?
Well, I was going to ask a question about, directly across the street is Commercial Highway.
It is, yes, sir.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for any comments. Anyone would like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium. Anyone like to speak on this matter? One more time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this matter? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Mr. Matt Taylor, the engineer, is available for questions if we so choose. If not, motion is available.
Vice Chairman Young, I'll make the motion that we approve the zoning request change, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 1.0 acres from OGR to Commercial Highway, 8.4 acres from CM, RM16 to CH, and 2.2 acres from RS10 to CH. 11.6 acres total for property located on South Rutherford Boulevard and north of Chalice Drive, Heatherwood Development applicant. Ms. Ely, you're up again.
Thank you. This third public hearing is to consider rezoning property, 11.6 acres located along the eastern side of South Rutherford Boulevard, from its three current zones, OGR, RM16, and RS10, to CH. The majority of the property is zoned RM16, multifamily residential district, that's 8.4 acres. One acre of the property, and that's to the north, is currently zoned OGR, General Office District Residential, and then there is a 2.2-acre portion along the southern side that's currently zoned RS10, and the applicant is requesting that you consider rezoning all three of these districts to CH, Commercial Highway District. The property to the, to the north is zoned RS15, single-family residential district, is currently undeveloped vacant land, and that RS15 district is probably not the most appropriate zone for that location, because RS15 district would permit single-family houses, and just to the north of that property, our property is zoned PCD, and that's the location of the Walmart Supercenter and its various out parcels and adjacent commercial uses. Across Rutherford Boulevard are some properties zoned RM12, which are the current location of some apartment communities. PCD, that PCD property is a self-storage facility, PRD, which are some, a single-family lots. And the property to the east is an unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and it's currently used for agricultural land. The property owner is requesting that you consider rezoning this to CH. As I mentioned before, the majority of the property is zoned RM16, and in fact, they have previously submitted a site plan to, proposing to develop it under the RM16 district. However, the Water and Sewer Department stated that they do not have capacity to develop it, according to that plan, so although there is a site plan approved, the applicant can't develop it as RM16 property. We, I think the Water and Sewer Department generally, their communications have generally stated that it would be possible to serve the property as commercial property, because the CH, commercial properties that we typically see in a CH zone are not as demanding on our water systems as an apartment community might be, so I think that that, those problems may not exist. There are no definite plans for this property. The applicants have some representatives here this evening, Mr. Larry Elliott and Mr. Richard Ray, and if you had questions, they could speak on their behalf. I have gotten wind that there is, adjacent to this property, there's an area where somebody may be coming before you to get, to request a rezoning change as well for some multifamily units, and I guess they've talked to the Water Department and worked that out. Of course, you're not considering that at this time, you're just considering rezoning the OGR, RM16, and RS10 property to CH, Highway Commercial District. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before you formulate your recommendation to send to City Council.
Any questions? Okay. With that, we will open the public hearing and invite anyone to speak for or against this matter. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, rezoning? Anyone wishing to speak on this rezoning request? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Questions for the staff, commissioners?
Seeing, Mr. Vice Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Our next item, Ms. Logan, glad to see you tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Young, Vice Chairman Young. Good to see you too, and the other members of the Planing Commission.
Our next item, let me read this. The next item is a zoning change request to amend the PS Plan Sinage Overlay District for 68.5 acres, and add 2.21 acres to the PSO for the property north of Medical Center Parkway and east of Thompson Lane, Middle Tennessee Medical Center applicant. Ms. Logan?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The first, the last one of your public hearings tonight is to amend the PSO for the hospital property located on approximately 68.5 acres. I've got a map on the screen for the people at home. If you can see that the area denoted in the orange color is the area of the existing hospital, and then the area proposed in Kentucky blue there is...
Kentucky blue.
Is that, I think I'm out of order. Is the additional property that is recently acquired by MTMC, that was previously city property and is being added to the PSO if you do approve this request, that's approximately 2.3 acres. So that's the first major amendment to the PSO, and just to give some background to the people at home, the Plan Sinage Overlay is a district that was established to try to incorporate what congruent signage plans for large properties, or more campus-like developments within the city, and we currently have three Plan Sinage overlays within the city of Murfreesboro, that being the Avenue, Stones River Mall, and Middle Tennessee Medical Center. Plan Sinage overlays are designed for 20 acres or more, for that main reason, so that we have, so that it allows the developers of those properties some flexibility, while also maintaining a consistent look, to try to keep the aesthetics that we have come to appreciate in those properties throughout the city of Murfreesboro. So the first change tonight, again, is to add the 2.3 acres from the city of Murfrees, that was acquired from the city of Murfreesboro into the PSO, and also to add signage for the MO2B building to allow for secondary entrance sign. As you know, currently, the medical office building too, which is going to be called the Seaton Building, is going to house a cancer center. That's currently under construction and will be, proposed to be open before the end of the year, and that building has two canopies. If you'll recall, we came back and amended the design of that after it already been permitted, but to allow for that. to allow for that separate entrance specifically for the cancer center. We want to make sure that they have adequate signage there at the entrance of the building so that people know how to get in. Eventually, unfortunately, if you're in a situation is that you may be at that building more than any of us would like for you to be at that building, but for newcomers, visitors, people who are there to see patients, et cetera, we want to make sure that people are aware of which entrance they, is, is the appropriate entrance for them. And so that's being requested for you tonight. We also want to change the secondary entrance signs at Thompson Lane and Gateway Boulevard, and the lettering from Physicians Office and Surgery Center to the DePaul and Seaton Buildings. Again, the DePaul Building is the existing MOB 1, and Seaton will be the MOB 2. We want to change the existing color, or they do, of the DePaul Building mounted sign from bronze face to white space. Add one building mounted sign to the Seaton Building to be identical in design to the DePaul Building signage. And add two identification signs locating one at each building entry for, at, for the MOB 1 signs to be, again, at the MOB 2. The other change I wanted to talk to you about is that they would like to add another Middle Tennessee Medical Center sign at the corner of Gateway Boulevard and North Thompson Lane. That's going to be similar in design and size to really make sure that people are aware that this part of their property, that that part of the property is part of their campus. In fact, you'll be seeing that they may be coming through with some improvements for that area in the near future, not to include buildings this time, but to include streetscape elements, hardscape elements, and adding some sidewalk and trying to really incorporate that property in, and really make sure that it's very presentable and is part of the campus, and also provide visibility of that area. We met with the hospital representatives this week to discuss that entry feature design. It's a possibility that there might be some slight modifications that would come back to you in the future. But in essence, what's shown in the book is ultimately what would be the true design of the sign. Again, if there's anything that's of, of major consequence, of course, we would bring it back to you. But I just wanted to let you know that that's part of this request tonight. Overall, we have no concerns about the proposed changes that they're requesting. We feel that it's in good order and in keeping with the elements of the design that they've already obviously established throughout the campus. So myself, I am available to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Adebah, and also Ms. Curers here tonight, if you have any specific questions on the sign or connects. And we will need to conduct a public hearing.
Any questions? Ms. Logan at this time, or we'll defer to the public hearing? We'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to speak for or against this matter. Please come forward. Anyone want to speak this matter? I think staff's the only one left. With that, I close the public hearing.
Glenn Davis from the hospital, or representing the hospitals here, but I don't, he had anything to add? He didn't have anything to add.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion in order?
Vice Chairman? I vote that we approve this based on staff comment.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. That was a, my vote was not a no vote. It was a, it was a mistake. It was, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. And that, and I vote yes. I'm confusing enough as it is. We don't need to make it worse. Because Ms. Ely's eyes bugged out of her head when I said that.
Thank you very much. We're glad to know that.
The clerk has noted your records, comments for the record.
Yeah, that's right. Make sure those are in the record. Our next item is a, a plat and plans, Wright Brothers Site Plan for 6, 6,600 square feet on .95 acres, Zone CF, located on St. Andrews Drive. Dr. Makiish Patel, developer.
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir, thank you. It's getting late, right? And this is a site plan for the property located along St. Andrews Drive, just south of Highway 96. It's, the property is zoned Commercial Fringe CF, and they're proposed use as a pharmacy, and that is a permitted use in the CF zone district. Yes, up on the screen, we have an aerial photo of where the property is, of where the site's proposed. It's on an existing gravel lot there currently, and this is the site that they're looking at proposing. The, overall, the site plan is in good order. They wanted to provide for one-way circulation at the rear, so we asked them to narrow it down to, they've shown 20-foot drive aisle. I think they're stuck a little bit right now between our fire department requirements of 20-foot minimum width, and then our requirements where we don't want a one-way drive aisle more than 18 feet. So we'll need to continue to work with them and make sure we get that acceptable to all of the staff before we get building permits. I would want our city traffic engineer to have a look at it, make sure he's okay with it. But they have shown the drive-through aisle at 15 feet to discourage two-way traffic. We want to make sure that people know that that's a one-way circulation through there and not to confuse the driver. And by keeping it at a minimum width, we're not encouraging a possibility there of having two-way drivers intercept. The applicants are proposing two drives on St. Andrews, and they've provided adequate site distance for that northern access from the existing access that's on St. Andrews Drive, so we're comfortable with what they've shown at this point. In addition, they've also shown an ice machine to be located on site, and there's currently one of those existing on South Church Street, if you're familiar with that. Staff had a little concern about how that would look with the rest of the property, so as part of their architectural design, they're going to screen that and make it with a, what they're going to take from the drive-through, build a canopy, and then wrap that in a brick enclosure so that there's, to try to make that part of the building instead of just as a, as an accessory structure stuck there in the landscape aisle and to the side. I wanted to show the Planning Commission the original design that they, if we could go to the computer screen, the original design that they proposed for the pharmacy building. And staff had a little concern about the roofline and the wall design on that, on this, on this rendering here, and also the large ephist protrusion at the front. This is what they've come back with as their, as their secondary or as their proposed design tonight. They're looking at doing a two-tone brick building. We may flip that gray and red a little bit. They've added a cornice on the top. They're going to change that to cantilevered awnings instead of ephist drop downs, add in some storefront windows to try to break up that facade, as well as have it also broken up on the side as you come, as you travel south along St. Andrews, because that's going to be a very visible side facade. And then you can see there the proposed drive-through canopy with the brick around the ice machine to screen it. They've also shown windows along the, the other side entrance. There's a side entrance of, if you're traveling north on St. Andrews, what you'll see from the side with the windows above, and then the, the brick can, the bricks wrapped around the ice machine, and then the rear, the rear elevation there. They've continued the brick banding all the way around and tried to break that up. It's kind of hard to see the corners work in this photo just because it's such a small scale, but they have added corners all the way around the top and raised the parapet to hide any rooftop screening. So this is the proposed design before you tonight. If you have any, otherwise, the site plan's in pretty good order. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Ms. Logan, I have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm envisioning this ice machine thing that you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
As you mentioned on South Church Street.
Yes, sir.
How does that work with respects to the signage? Does that, do they lose the amount of signage that they would have on the building with respects to the way they would advertise that ice machine?
Ms. Curers, I was looking for Ms. Curer. I think that, no, it's okay. I think they would. This situation, because they're going to put that brick structure around it, there won't be any signage on that ice machine. There may be a small sign that says ice, but it'll count towards their building signage. By then putting that brick enclosure around the ice machine and attaching it with the canopy, it all becomes part of the building. So whatever their total building signage allowed is and the number of signs, that will count towards meeting that requirement.
Okay.
So you are fairly comfortable with that?
It's a diff, I've not seen a brick enclosure for an ice machine before, but I feel like they think that the architect feels like he can make it look just like part of the building, more like an ATM, like an ATM machine, really. Essentially, that's what he's designed it to look like, an ATM machine, and it'll just be an ice machine instead of an ATM, which I appreciate the fact that they're trying to incorporate it into the building and make it a part of the site instead of just kind of sticking it out there next to the building, and then I think it would really look out of place.
From a consumer's standpoint, it makes it.
Yeah, it's great. It works great for the consumer because it's going to be a pharmacy and.
And the neighborhood is.
And the neighborhood, and so, and they're going to have a parking space right there at the front of it, the way the site's designed. I mean, I think it'll work out well from that standpoint. So I think it's a, this, this is something that can benefit both the developer and the city with the design that they've proposed.
You know, in some communities, these type of ice machines are decorated with penguins, polar bears, and ice cubes, and, you know, have a lot of, of, I guess. Character to them. And, and that character is neat in the right place, but this is not what we would consider the right place. And, and I really appreciate Ms. Logan's efforts to work with the architecture team to look at something that will make it time with the building and, and actually make it look like a, an element of the building. It'd be much preferable. It looked good.
I bet she made them holler. Any questions on this?
Chairman, there are no questions. I make the motion for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think our next item on the agenda is staff comments and/or other business. Ms. Logan, you're still at the podium, so.
Oh, no, I'm just shutting the computer down. I'm sorry. I don't have anything else.
Ms. Adebah?
Yes, sir, I do. I need to remind the planning commission members that you all have training obligations, and because we do offer some training, but it's one hour per teleconference, you're going to have four hours. You might want to begin to look at that. If you would like, Mr. Lewis will probably be sending you a calendar of meeting dates. Some of you all are well underway with your four hours, some of you aren't. We may be looking at some other opportunities through the year, but these teleconferences are economical. They are often interesting, sometimes they're not, but often they are. But they are, are an opportunity to learn something during the lunch, and we will provide you lunch. So we'll, we'll be sending you a calendar on that, and I do want to encourage you to attend.
Ms. Jaco is very vigilant in reminding us by email that what's going on and what the topics are. It's something that we should be aware of.
Ms. Alden, my staff report.
Any other business from anyone tonight? If not, we are adjourned.